I would ask Pastor Zach Strong to come forward and give our invocation if you would please. Would you all please stand? Thank you, Zach.
Thank you. Let's pray, alright? Father, we are just so thankful for your goodness, your grace. Thank you for our city, Lord. Father, I thank you for these men and women that have given themselves, Father, to this city for this time to serve and to guard and to govern the affairs, Lord, of our community. Father, I pray, God, that through them, that you would fill them with your grace and with your wisdom and with all goodness. That, Father, in every decision being made, it would be made one to glorify you. Secondly, Lord, that we would see blessing fill the lives of the citizens of this community. And that, Father, we would see peace rule our area. That God, it would be declared and noted to be one of the greatest places in the state and throughout the whole nation. Father, we give you praise for that right now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. God to get in here. Would you join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the June 18th regular meeting of the City Council. Study session, we really have no big items to talk about tonight, but Scott's got a few things he wanted to bring up, so I'll give the floor to him.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to point out a couple of things having you at the budget. You have at your seats a summary of services provided by First Call for Help. We have a long and lasting relationship with First Call for Help. We provide a little bit of support for them. And I think it's since 1999, they've been in existence. And they are a service whereby people can call there needing help of any kind. And they know all of the avenues to help find them help. And sometimes they can in one call do that. Sometimes it's an ongoing relationship with a client, and they're able to do that. So I know last time when we had the hearing, we had several of the outside agencies came and gave their report. They were not able to do that, but they were able to provide this for you. So I wanted to point that out. Secondly, last time, I think I failed to point out that in the budget is the red iron at the airport for the control tower. That was a project that council had discussed and wanted us to try to find a way. So we made an exception to our, in the budget, to our programming of the casino funds. Typically, we only program them after the year that they're actually raised. This action allows us to go ahead and use a little bit of the capital money raised this year in order to accomplish that. So I wanted to make sure we pointed that out. And also to thank council for your hard work during this entire budget process. I wore my tie tonight that is a Beatles tie that says "It's a Long and Winding Road." And that's kind of the budget process. We start staff in January, working on putting together budgets, go through repeated meetings, finding efficiencies, trying to make the expected revenue match the programs that we have. And then have in April, starting with council, with the council retreat. You all had a special meeting to discuss. We used a new tool this year called Socrata, which we think makes the budget much more understandable. And people are able to look and see how it grows over time and what are being accomplished with the budget. So feel good about that. Made several of the requests that you all made. And then we had the public hearing last time where agencies came and talked about what they did. This is beyond what, during the retreat, where we talked to each of our departments about what they do and what the direction they were taking. And so tonight is the culmination of all that. So I wanted to thank you for your hard work in that area. So I believe that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me or for staff? Be glad to.
Buddy? Thank you, Scott.
Alright, thank you.
There are no presentations this evening. We'll go run into communication reports. Any of you on the City Council got any reports?
Have the Hugo Salt.
You reported that last time?
I wasn't here, so.
And it went quite well. It was a large crowd there. Seniors and lawmen together have a memorial every year. This is the fallen officers in southeast Missouri. And there's 49 fallen officers that are honored. And the format was changed a little bit this year, and it was quite a, it was received well.
I hated to miss it.
The families were appreciative, so hopefully you can join us next year. See you again.
Anybody else? Any reports from anybody about anything? Everybody's quiet tonight. I got back on Friday night from being on vacation a while. And Saturday morning, I was, I was asked to welcome the Marine Corps Service League State Convention, which was out at the convention center. And it was an honor to be there and do that for the city. I got to be there for the memorial service for all those Marines around the state that passed away this last year since their last convention. And welcome to the city. It was nice to have them here. They were glad to be here at the convention center. And they loved the space, and I think they want to come back to Cape again, so.
Love to have them.
To have them. Do you have anything?
I'll get a few things just to point out. On a sad note, our Paul Kesterson, who was with the Fire Department from 1958 through 1996, passed away this last week. He attained the rank of Assistant Chief prior to passing away. And I think the funeral was held this afternoon, and we were able to have some in attendance. So that's a sad day for that, but wanted to recognize his service. Couple other things. The aquatic complex. We have come up with the names to serve on the committee to look at the aquatic complex and what, how that should be made up. Mayor is going to serve, myself and Kathy Bertrand on the city side. And then I believe on the school side, Kyle McDonald, Neil Glass, and Clay Hawes are going to serve. Julia will be our, Julia Jones will be our staff liaison. And then we'll have a consultant that will help us go through a process that's been put together to go through, similar to what we did with the indoor sports complex. And hopefully we'll have as great a result. We think it certainly has a good chance to have that great result, to come up with the right place, the right facility, and the right operations that will not only be a great asset to the city, but will also be a revenue enhancer and balanced budget at that. So we think our $6 million on the table and the operating that we already have on the table will be a good incentive to bring partners to the table. Independence Traffic Study, that's moving along as expected. Probably have some recommendations to staff into the summer, early fall. Probably have a public meeting, talk about those, so that's coming along. The idea is that we could then implement those maybe next construction season. Bloomfield, the rock on the face of the retaining walls, the Bloomfield Road. Think we found a product to do that, so that's moving along. We've been looking for the right product that would, that will fix that problem and fix it permanently. And so engineering thinks they have found a product to do that, so we're moving along with that. Going to have to get a contract together for it and work through that. Lights on Broadway, if you haven't had a chance to go down and look at the lights on Broadway. I've been down. Pacific to Sprig was done by last Friday. And it's a significantly different light. It's brighter, and the spread of the light is much more. Goes all the way to the, into the sidewalks, to the front of the buildings. I think the other thing is the way the lights are configured, they don't have a lens on the bottom. When I was walking through, there were a lot of our existing lights that bugs accumulate inside that lens and make the light get less bright over time. I don't think that's going to be a problem with these new LED lights. So I'm very pleased with that, and that's proceeding along. And there's a stark difference if you haven't been out there to check that out. Also just mentioned, we've had, with the great hot weather, we've had to shut down Central Pool at times when we don't have enough lifeguards to cover Cape Splash. So they've been at top capacity at Cape Splash. That's a good thing. But it does cause some staffing issues. And when we have those staffing issues, we've been having to close Central at times to do that. So you know anybody that would, is a good swimmer and can get their lifeguard license, see Julia? That's all I have.
Mayor, I'd like to make one more point. While you were gone, I welcomed the State Convention Visitor Bureau Convention to Cape Girardeau at the Conference Center. And it was, the point I'm trying to make was, it was told me by many members there that morning that they wouldn't be there except for the Conference Center. And they might be back, so that's the point I was on there. Good for the conference.
Absolutely.
Yep. And it won't get huge, big conventions here, but a lot of those midsize and whatnot are good for the community and good for our.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Any questions, Scott? We'll move right on to Planning and Zoning Commission Report. We have the old member here tonight.
Went down the list, and I was the first one to say yes. We had several items on the agenda this last Wednesday night. I'm going to skip the first one and come back to it last. We did that meeting also. We had approximately 42 or 44 people at our meeting. Most of them were there for item number one, which is the property at Hopper and Old Hopper. Moving to item number two, though, and again, I'll come back to that. We had a hearing for request for exception for buffer yards at Kingsway behind the Regency Building. There's a retainer wall there. We did approve this. We asked them to put a fence up, or not fence, a railing at the retainer wall so that anybody that came down would not fall off of the wall. It was just slightly underneath the code, height of 48 inches. But it was on a downhill grade and then the wall. So if you had physical momentum going, you were going all the way down. So that was approved with a condition. Rental and Orchards asked for a sign at West Park Mall, and that was approved. We have several flats. Highlands Hopper Crossing, right in there. Everybody's kind of seen the dirtwork there behind Ford and signs to the side. That was approved with no problems. It was conditional. But Terrace Estates, that one, we had no problem with that one either. Make myself a little more familiar with which one that one is right off of that. That was up the road at Gordonville Road. Oh, that is, that one's going to be very noticeable. That one's at the corner of Edgewood Road, Gordonville, and Missouri Route K. Across from the intersection there, there's three lots being developed in there. And that, we had no problems with that. I think one of them will enter from Gordonville and the other two off of Edgewood. Walden Park Phase Four and Walden Park Phase Five, again, no problems with either of those. And West End Place Third Edition, no trouble with that one. But coming back to the public hearing. Brandon Williams requested the 55-acre flat at the corner of Old Hopper-Hopper, and it's buffered by the interstate on the other side. He asked for three different subdivision, or three different uses of land, a C1, an R1, and an R3. The R3 was what was approved. The R1 will stand as it is. The R3 was approved. There was one descending vote, and it was me. And then the C2, we had a, we had two.
C1.
A C1, right, yes. We had two members that could not vote. One was approximately, and one was a business interest. So we only had six voting members, and it was a tie on it, 3-3. I think he has decided to.
Withdrew.
Withdrew that.
Yes.
That. And the biggest question we had on that was developing it without the street and without the street, not having a real plan on how he was going to develop it. So there was quite a bit, again, about seven people left out of that 42 to 44. So there were quite a few people here that really were worried about traffic and so forth with that R3 being cut back in. Again, it was approved, but with it being cut back in, there were quite a few of them that were worried about that. The question that really came of it, and we asked Ryan to look into approaching anything that's a large plot like that, again, 55 acres, three different zonings, look into seeing whether we should approach that as a plan development. Had that come in as a plan development district, everything would have been laid out in a way that almost every question you would have had would have been answered right then. Because the R1 would have been laid out, the R3 would have been laid out, and the C1 would have been laid out on what they had in mind. And because of that, with such a large piece of property, it just makes it difficult to address entering and exiting the R3, how the R1 is going to enter and exit from Old Hopper and Hopper, and any congestion that we have right there. Most of the neighbors, again, was congestion. There were some property value issues, but I don't think the R3 is really going to cause an issue there. So that one is going to come before you, though, again, with a crowd. So brace yourself. Any questions on any of this?
If the city required a PD over a certain acreage, would it lead to people just breaking up their acreages?
That is possible, but it would have been difficult to handle the R3 as a single piece in that, or the C1 as a single piece in that, at this particular point.
I, I'm a big PD fan, but I just didn't know if that would be an outcome of requiring it over a certain.
Having been on the commission long enough to see PD develop, I've become a big fan of it also.
Yeah.
Mostly because it just answers all the questions. And.
Forces people to plan. That's kind of what we're in.
It takes away some variables that the neighbors don't understand.
Absolutely.
Yeah, since it's in my ward, I've been inundated, I think is a fair word, from the folks in the area, all of whom are, from what I'm hearing, are very concerned. The traffic kind of probably being the major concern, especially upon considering that along Old Hopper Road, there's an additional development that's going in right now. Not even, not even part of this development that you're speaking of.
Yeah, Collins Mill.
Collins Mill.
I think it's about 42 lots in Collins Mill.
Forty-two lots. So neighbors are very concerned. There's no information required regarding, you know, where that in and out on that proposed R3 development would be, how that's going to look eventually, you know, thinking five or 10 years down the road. What's the situation? Let me ask a few questions. You're talking about the plan development. It's my understanding that can only, that can only be requested by the property owner? Or is that?
The developer.
The developer or the property owner, okay. But you're saying, you're talking about possibly in the future, some kind of city? I mean, the city could.
We asked what we looked into. The biggest reason, again, was the three different zonings.
Right.
Because of the multiple zonings.
Right.
It kind of changes the use of the land. Had all of this entered as an R1, you would develop from the street and work your way back.
Right.
That's not a problem.
Right.
But as developing in three different pieces, you can develop each piece separate for its application. And you, I guess, can sort of landlock the R3, or you can sort of landlock the partial, you can sort of, well, the residential piece, no problem. The R2 streets. So that's kind of where the question.
Is this a?
And let me say, I'm sorry, but there is one very good example of the plan development, and that is Walden Park. So that was all laid out beforehand, and then we continued to approve subdivision flats inside of it. But it's all within what is.
Is there any other situation you all can think of similar to this, where in the future you can foresee mixed-use zoning, but it's not, but it wasn't a planned development? I mean, is this fairly common? You know, the process that's now taking place, is that a fairly common one for similar types of property?
One to you that was developed just before this, that was multiple zonings, and that was now Hoozie.
But that was done.
It was done before we had the plan development.
So that was not a planned development?
That was.
I assumed it was, just because of the way.
No, it was before that. Now, Hoozie could have addressed, could have addressed multiple things in it, with the subdivisions on the one side, the golf course in the middle. And then now it has other pieces with the new senior housing unit going in on the one. And all of that could have been addressed early on with that. And they still done a good job there. That's not what I'm saying. But that could have presented, been presented in a total package, and then just developed over the 10 or 20 years. You take a piece of property, 55 acres, there's not very many developments around here that are going to happen within a five- or six-year timeframe.
Yeah.
It's going to happen over eight or 10 years.
Right, okay.
The apartment unit at the corner of Bertling and Sprig is the biggest thing that's going in one particular chunk in this town in a while.
Yeah. So this is, this is a normal process, even for this size of a property, is what I'm trying, is what I'm.
I'm not sure I'm understanding how you're.
Well, except, there have been charges or concerns that this is happening piecemeal, you know, blah, blah. But it sounds like it's fairly normal.
The process is standard. I mean, it's just, just the variables are confusing, to the name, I guess. Quite legal. Quite legal, yes. Yes, they are. Yeah, there's nothing, nothing underhanded going on. It's just.
Sure.
And we express that quite a bit in planning and zoning. If you have something that you think is going to ruffle the feathers of those around you, talk to your neighbors. And.
But they don't have to.
You don't necessarily have to.
Well, that's, then that's, that happens sometimes with certain developers. Some developers, you know, try to do things with a book and just want to get things done and don't really talk to neighbors. Others are very friendly and do so. You know, I, this developer that's talking about doing this has done some nice developments within the city. And everything he's done, and when he says he's going to do something, he does it. And generally, it does not vary from that. He builds very good, quality housing and quality apartments. And I think that's not been an issue.
Nope. Now, what he's proposing here compared to the piece on Williamville Road.
Right.
So it is a nice-looking, nice-looking R3 subdivision.
Would it, would it be inappropriate for me to ask why you voted no?
Egress.
Meaning?
Entering and exiting the neighborhood.
Well.
My biggest reason.
Meaning because you don't yet know what the situation would be, or?
My, and I'll just say it this way, my gut feeling from what I was seeing, being asked for, and, you know, we did have seven, or no, we had five guest houses, we had two, and my one was the only, is right now I can see one entrance and exit and as many as 144 units in there. And if that was developed in the first initial setup and nothing else was developed around it, then I felt that was going to be a strain on that particular, that was my gut feeling. I did not change the, I did not change the vote or the approval, but my gut feeling was just that.
Well, it seems like, again, comments or questions I have, I'm receiving from the neighbors is the, along those lines, you know, questions or concerns, you know, all the way trickling down Old Hopper Road, trying to get onto Mount Auburn. I guess my question is, what can we do, if anything? What's appropriate to ask regarding looking into future traffic patterns? Or how do you, how do you address, as a City Council?
We can have staff look at the proposal, look at the number of units in the R3 and the R1, and look at the road with the current properties around there and actually do a study and come up with, Molly?
Yes. So the rezoning request is really to determine whether or not the requested land use is appropriate in that location. And so that's really the first question that must be answered, is the R1 and R3, and I think C1 was originally proposed too, is that appropriate in this location, knowing what those type of land uses generate? After that, if the rezoning is approved, then the developer would come back with a subdivision flat for the R1. At that time, we would determine whether the access is appropriate based on the number of lots. They have to have so many required egress points, ingress and egress points. And so all of that would be evaluated after the rezoning is in place, and we go to the subdivision flat. Now, with the plan development, that would be done concurrently. And I think that's what Mr. McClanahan is stating, is that if it had been a plan development application, a lot of those questions would be answered upfront at the rezoning stage, because it does require a development plan at that point in time. So we will still get to the same place, I think, it's just a different method of getting there.
And that has been, and we have that up, situations where we have approved or re-approved the different egress and subdivisions along the way.
We've changed.
Case in point, Williamsburg.
Yes. Yeah, there was an extra entrance added to that.
Because originally, okay, so it's not to say that he could, planning and zoning could approve over here, and then he'd come back and want to seek approval to do it somewhere else.
There's flexibility at all. I mean, there's flexibility in plan development to come back and say, we've changed our mind, we want to do something different. I mean, there's also, you know, developer can say now, here's what I've been thinking of doing, but as long as it meets the zoning and our development code, then they can, they can change their mind later as well. You know, I very much prefer plan developments. I'd like to incentivize and make it to where we do that as much as we can. But currently, under the thing, we have not, Cape is never, that I know of, done any, or desired to have impact fees or impact studies done so that all of the, all of the traffic is studied. And then if you impact it, then you have, then the developer's responsible for doing things to mitigate that. That's not what we have. The size of city we are, typically, it doesn't cause a problem. When I worked in St. Louis, that was common. Everybody did an impact study of everything they did. And then there were impact fees associated with those, with those studies, to do the study. And then also the work that would be necessary after the study, they were responsible for all that. And that was common way of doing business there. But it's not, that's not common for us, and our size of city probably would typically not be.
And to also state that R3 is a buffer between C1 and R1, that's what it's designed to be. designed to be, so.
Well, maybe I'm not, let me try and, let me just try and be very clear about the concerns I'm hearing. They're not so much what's going on within the R3 boundary. It's what happens when potentially, if you've got 144 units, you've got more than probably 200 cars are trying to get out, or actually, they're already out, they made it out, and now they're on, now they're in the very back of that neighborhood, neighborhood being Old Hopper Road, and what does that cause down the line? That's what they are asking. These are all folks who are farther down the line, I guess, east of that development.
Well, you gotta be practical and know that not, not every car is gonna be leaving at exactly the same time.
I understand.
And they also, some will go the New Hopper Road and out, some will go to Old Hopper Road now, so you can't really delineate where they're gonna go.
It's just, it's just an interesting.
Ashland Hills, Ashland, and then all of their subdivision was all going out before 2000, was going out Old Hopper and Cotton. And now you've got, you're gonna add 144, you've got New Hopper, that it's not like all 144 are gonna be done. I mean, in a perfect world, we are all hoping that AMD will be done, which will not be another outlet for people going to work out there. Really kind of, the traffic, I read the comments from, from the bank, the traffic to me is no bigger of an issue than whatever Ashland Court or Ashland Hills was.
And if you also.
Or Carroll.
You mentioned the traffic, the traffic's just a piece of what the concern was.
Right.
So you are, you're correct with that. I mean, it's, it's not, it's all doable. It's just.
I think the uncertainty, okay, and we, we all know with this developer that there is uncertainty. It's uncommon for him to go knock on doors, and I, I get that, but it all fits, it all makes sense, traffic, price, point, all that, they're really not. I mean, I get your point about the egress piece.
It's the one touching one.
But we would have to, you would have to approve that eventually.
Yes, yes.
So.
Right, and again.
If P&amp;Z didn't like where.
That comes during the subdivision process.
Right, so I mean, it's not like.
Is that in for all the different requirements?
It's not to say that on the next go-around, you might not like where it was going or what he decided to vote against at that point.
Oh, yeah, there's nothing that says, I, I mean, I have no problem with the R3 there, what I have a problem with was just the.
With the exit.
Right. I think, I think that will be taken care of when they develop a subdivision.
Agreed.
And I don't, I don't see that as an issue. The other big issue I kept reading in the comments is that, you know, they bought this, they bought their property, and that was just a big vacant, like a farm, and they liked that, they liked seeing the deer, and they liked seeing that vacant land, you know? And the only way, you know.
We see that a lot.
But that happens everywhere in the city when someone, when someone buys some property and wants to develop it, and you can't deny that person right to develop it, there were guidelines, and, I know, we're gonna hear a lot about this. Anyway, any other questions, Scott?
Thank you.
Thank you for a good report. Are there any appearances this evening from anybody, for any item that's not on the agenda this evening? Any appearances for any item that's not on the agenda? The subdivision we just talked about's not on the agenda this evening, so if somebody's here wants to talk about that, now's the time. All right, agenda review.
Just briefly, the, I got the second and third readings of the budget, the, the solid waste free and the, and the water and sewer rates, the temporary uses that we talked about last time, the annual operating budget, the planning consolid, planning consolidation grant for Simpo, and the relocation policy for our downtown tip. We have three new resolutions regarding the Humane Society, that agreement with work we do with them, you heard them last time. We have made one change to that, that agreement. Last time we required it, we required their audit to be done sooner, because we hadn't received one, and so this time we're allowing the audit to coincide with their year, which is on a calendar year basis. So it saves them some money, so we were okay with it, because last time they received a clean audit and everything was good. So also a resolution regarding the loggers, election change, so this change is the retirement system we've been talking about for some time. They require a resolution stating that from the council, so this does that. And then the last resolution is accepting improvements by Festy at Arena Park at those restrooms that we, that we tore down and reconstructed. So that is those. We have two new, two new ordinances, record plat at the West End, making two lots into one, along with some excess right-of-way, and then the end-of-year expenditures. Then you have the appointments, I think we already got your input on, and that would be it. Any questions? We do have a couple of closed-session items tonight, so we'll be adjourning into closed session once we complete the regular session.
Are there any items on the consent agenda anybody would like removed? Any items that anybody needs to be used from floating on? No? All right, I'm gonna read these first.
Oh, you want to call, we call the, call the regular session into order.
Make a motion to go into regular session?
No, we just call it to order and have roll call.
Yeah, we do gotta have, we do have to have roll call, though.
Yeah, we have to, we have to call, we have to have session to order, gabble it in, and then.
I'm on the second page. I'm jumping the gun a little bit. Call to order. Roll call.
Ryan Exis.
Here.
Bob Box.
Here.
Robbie Guard.
Here.
Victor Gunn.
Here.
Stacy Kinder.
Here.
Shelley Moore.
Here.
Dan Preston.
I'll entertain a motion, we adopt the agenda.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Guard, second by Mr. Gunn. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There are no public hearings tonight. Well, I did try to jump the gun, didn't I?
You're good.
Not like I want to get out of here. Are there any individuals who wish to comment on any items on the agenda this evening? Any comments on the, any items on the agenda? If not, then we'll move with the consent agenda. Bill number 18-80, an ordinance establishing utility rates for the State of Cape Girardee, Missouri by amending Chapter 22 relating to solid waste fees and Chapter 29 relating to water rates, and ordinance establishing utility rates for the State of Cape Girardee, Missouri by amending Chapter 2 relating to solid waste fees and Chapter 29 relating to water rates. Number 18-81, an ordinance made Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the State of Cape Girardee, Missouri regarding temporary uses, and ordinance made Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the State of Cape Girardee, Missouri regarding temporary uses. Bill number 18-82, an ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the State of Cape Girardee, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the State of Cape Girardee, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018. Number 18-83, an ordinance authorizing city manager to execute transportation planning consolidated grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Southeast Metropolitan Planning Organization expenses in the State of Cape Girardee, Missouri, and ordinance authorizing city manager to execute transportation planning consolidated grant agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Southeast Metropolitan Planning Organization expenses in the State of Cape Girardee, Missouri. Number 18-84, an ordinance adopting relocation policy in connection with redevelopment projects, and ordinance adopting relocation policy in connection with redevelopment projects. Number 18-85, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute housing agreement with the Humane Society of Southeast Missouri and the State of Cape Girardee, Missouri. Number 18-86, resolution electing and changing the Missouri Local Government employees' retirement system to adopt the LT 1465 plan. Any questions about the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion, we pass it.
So moved.
Moved by Ryan Essex, who I hear second.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Guard. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. New ordinances. Bill number 1887, an ordinance promoting the record plat of West End Place subdivision, or West End Place Third Edition, first reading.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Guard, second by Dan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 1888, an ordinance appropriating funds for operating expenditures, capital expenditures, debt service expenditures, and transfers for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018, in the City of Cape Girardee, Missouri.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Guard.
Second.
Second by Mr. Essex. Any discussion? No, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have some appointments this evening. It looks like we've got the Airport Advisory Board, and you all have appointed Richard. Nope. Motion. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Guard, I hear second. Second by Shelley. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll go, I'll go to Historic Preservation Commission next. That one, you all selected Rayan Spears. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Guard, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Shelley. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next two, the Public Laboratory Board, or mayoral appointments, and those will be Stacy Dohan Lane, Eric Reddinger, and Anthony Robinson. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Mr. Guard, second by Shelley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The last is the Cape Dogwood Community Improvement District Board of Directors. Again, these are also appointed by the mayor and approved by the council. There are five members, Amanda Kumar Patel, Anand Kumar Patel Jr., Anisa Fongay Patel, James P. Limbaugh, and Mark C. Hogan.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Guard, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Essex. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have any other business? I would entertain a motion to adjourn from regular session and convene to closed session to discuss legal actions, litigation, confidential communication with legal counsel on property transactions pursuant to revised section, Missouri Section 610.1, 1, and 2. Mr. Guard, and second by Shirley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good, we're there. We will go there, you won't be fair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So knowing, as soon as he gets down here.